I'd like to call the meeting to order for the town of Munster Town Council regular meeting for April first. Mrs. Miss, would you call the roll?
Councillor Shinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Nellens.
Here. With that, I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're pleased to be seated. At this time, we have a special presentation to be made.
Good evening, thank you council members, residents of the town of Munster and everyone who's here today and those watching online. Mike Andrade, the representative from House District 12. To represent the town of Munster, the town of Hyden, the town of Griffith, and a portion of Sheraton. Last year around September, it was brought to my attention in a police chief meeting when we were honoring actually Chief Hushnekia Hyden, because he retired after thirty seven years of service. There was chatter on who was going to be the longest police chief after Chief Hushnekia retired, which was last year, and it was brought to my attention that our Munster Police Chief, Steve Shekko, is now the longest-serving police chief in Lake County. Not only is he the longest-serving police chief in Lake County, but he is also fulfilling thirty five years of service in the town of Munster. Want to make sure that I'm being fair here, making it everyone up. So when you look at thirty five years, a number, it's not just a number. What does thirty five years also mean? Longevity, dedication, hard work, long hours. Taken away from his family as well while you're serving here in the community. Faithfulness. I've seen firsthand the work that our police chief has done here in Munster, more resident of Munster as well. I've always said this, that if our communities are safe, our families are safe, our children are safe. We, I mean, the community, when it comes to the coffee shops and grocery shopping, and our children going to the stores, so we want our communities to be thriving. But in order for our communities to thrive, public safety should always be a priority when it comes to the community. And I, as your state representative, have done that also at the state house, ensuring that the resources and legislation gets passed that strengthen public safety. So that's what I'm hearing today. This session, I was able to pass a resolution in the House of Representatives. Resolution number six. Number six means that out of so many resolutions that were submitted, this was number six approved by the Speaker of the House and the members of the House of Representatives, so that tells you how important this resolution is to our state, to our town, and to our community. State of Indiana General Assembly House Resolution Number Six introduced by your servant, Mike Andrade, adopted by vote on January twenty second of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty fourth during the second regular session of the one hundred and twenty-third General Assembly. House Resolution congratulating Munster Police Chief Stephen Shekko for thirty five years of service. Chief Stephen Shekko is a thirty five-year veteran of the Munster Police Department and has served as chief since his promotion in two thousand and eight. Chief Shekko holds a master's degree in law enforcement administration and graduated from Nalea from Northwest University Center for Public Safety, prior to becoming chief of police, he served as patrol officer, there officer, and sergeant to the patrol division. Chief Shekko has served outside his community as one of the first coordinators for the Indiana Intelligence Fusion Center for Northwest Indiana, as a leader of the district one law enforcement strike team since two thousand and nine, for which he was hand-selected by the Indiana Department of Homeland Security Director and is president of the Northwest Indiana Critical Infrastructure Group since two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eight, the town of Munster was severely impacted by excessive flooding due to the hurricane, and Chief Shekko was instrumental in establishing the town of Munster Emergency Operations Center, which helps secure emergency assistance through the region. Chief Shekko has previously served on the FEMA Regional Advisory Council that comprises the six Midwestern states of Region Five. He remains active in volunteer community efforts with both the Rotary Club of Munster and the Munsters Lions Club. And he has received numerous awards and distinctions throughout the course of both his law enforcement career and volunteer service. Chief Shekko has shown dedication to not only the town of Munster, but to the entire Northwest Indiana region over the course of thirty five years of service. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the General Assembly of the State of Indiana, that the Indiana House Representative congratulates Munster Police Chief Stephen Shekko for thirty five years of service. Joining me this evening, we were trying to keep this a secret, is his wife Bridget, who's in the back, Chief Shekko's executive assistant back there as well, and one of Chief Shekko's sons, who's also in law enforcement, who is a deputy sheriff back there as well. So thank you as well, because the family, I know, takes a lot when it comes to someone in leadership in the community being gone, taking those emergency phone calls, so twenty forty-seven, three hundred and sixty-five day job. And I know I brought your phone a lot too, Chief. When residents call me seriously recently, there was an issue, you know, residents reaching out to my office, there's this car who just keeps avoiding and not following the law, they're passing the bus stops, which actually we're passing, we're working on legislation to go after those reckless drivers who are not following the law when it comes to scores and making sure their children are protected. But right away, I'm calling Chief Shekko, "Chief, can you have someone from your team please go into that?" And he's always available if he doesn't answer, he does return his, my costs in a timely manner. And that means a lot to me, that he cares for the community. Goes out of his way, when there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony of a new business coming in, he comes with me and we introduce ourselves to the new business. And I tell the business owner, "This is your police chief, if you need him, reach out to him, he's here to make sure that your business is safe." Not only Chief, but the great work that we have several law enforcement officers here for the Munster Police Department as well, under his leadership, they're out there keeping our community safe. And so, thank you. I do have one more surprise for you, Chief. This, I actually had to call it an audible at the last minute. This is from our lieutenant governor, who just was here recently in the town of Munster for the last several years. She has come and visited my district and toured my district, specifically in parts of Lake County. For many years before I became an elected official, I heard about Indianapolis and the region, there's a disconnect, and how can we bridge that gap? And so I said, "Well, when I become an elected official, I'm gonna bring our branch, executive branch of government up with to our district," and I've done so for the last several years. So this is from the lieutenant governor, the State of Indiana Office of the Lieutenant Governor, "To all who shall see this present ingredients, Lieutenant Governor's Leadership Award is given to Stephen Shekko. Be it known and proclaimed, the Lieutenant Governor recognizes school shirts who have distinguished themselves by demonstrating outstanding community service, exemplary academic achievement, or exceptional leadership in their communities. The State of Indiana values school shirts who are invested in our state's future. Stephen is a thirty five-year veteran of the Munster Police Department, serving as chief since two thousand and eight, and has shown a devotion to his fellow school shirts, the community leadership, and volunteerism. Stephen Shekko was awarded the Lieutenant Governor's Leadership Award on April first of two thousand and twenty-four to Sam Crouch, Lieutenant Governor." Thank you, once again, Chief Shekko, for your commitment, your service, and your dedication to our town and to our families and our community. Thank you, Tom Consol, for giving me this moment of opportunity to send this to our police chief. Thank you to the residents right here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Andrade. All right, that takes us up to a proclamation of the two thousand and twenty-four Arbor Day, and Munster is known as the Tree City. I'm going to ask Councilman Hoffman.
Hopper.
Hopper, to read that for us.
A proclamation of the Munster Town Council, a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton composed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, reduce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster hereby supports April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four as Arbor Day, and encourages its citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And be it further proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster encourages all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Passed and adopted by the Town Council of the Town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, this first day of April, two thousand and twenty-four, by a vote of five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much.
As a formality, do I need to make a motion that we accept and make the proclamation to recognize Arbor Day Resolution?
Yes.
I make that motion?
I'll second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Miss, do you want to call the roll?
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. The next item I'd like to bring up is an informational item regarding the town of Munster here. There was scheduled an overnight closure on West Forty-Fifth at Canadian National Tracks in order to install a trestle, but because of the rain, that had been canceled regarding April fifth, and rescheduled for Monday, April eighth, six P M. through April ninth at six A M. They want to have the road closed while they're lifting that trestle up in place and getting ready for the commuter train coming. Also, we have been watching and we're expecting potentially some heavy rains through the night and tomorrow. The town, along with the Little Tanneman River Commission, has been monitoring the level of the river, and at a certain point, it will raise that the town employees will be so directed to take any safety action that needs to take place. We do have bladders and material in order to close off the North Cot Bridge and monitoring the others. And again, if you have any questions, or if you feel that there is a problem that you see, don't hesitate, I'm gonna say, call nine-one-one and notify them that you have a question or you've seen a problem. And with that, I just wanted to make sure that all of you were aware of that. We will be opening up the, open to the public here. The council acknowledges the ongoing significance of the Center for Visual and Performing Arts to our town, its residents, and to the school town of Munster. We have received a considerable number of additional emails since their last meeting, which we are actively reviewing as part of our informational gathering process. The insights provided through these communications have been invaluable. Furthermore, we recognize that there are individuals present tonight who wish to address the council specifically regarding the Center for Visual and Performing Arts. While we welcome any additional perspectives, we kindly request speakers to be mindful and respectful of the comments previously shared with the public comments, period or submitted electronically. Additionally, we ask that speakers avoid repetitive remarks. We greatly appreciate the community's input as we navigate through this issue. With respect to the open to the public, we kindly ask that all in-person public comments be limited to two minutes, a maximum per person, per person, or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to our public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your question in the meeting minutes, and we will refer questions to the appropriate department or staff for follow-up and response. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have a question or a comment about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to clerk treasurer, Wendy Miss, at Wmiss, W M I S, at munster.in.gov. And with that, I would like to open up the open to the public session, be mindful of our two-minute minute, our two-minute limit, or five minutes for a group spokesperson. And if you could please state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Jacobs, and I live at two-five-four-three Hickory Drive in Dyer. I wanted to just bring up the issue of the economic impact of the theater at the center, the South Shore Arts, the symphony, and the catering operation over at the CBPA. My husband and I come to the shows all the time, and there's four hundred people in the audience sitting next to us. And before we come to the shows, we stop off, we'll get a coffee on the way here. After the show, we go to dinner, we go to Giovanni's, we go to Cafe Borja, and more recently, we've discovered Fiore. So, and we often see other theater patrons sitting at the other tables. So if, if the tenants at the building at ten forty across the street lose their lease and end up having to go to somewhere else, there's no guarantee that they're gonna stay in Munster. They could end up in Crown Point, they could end up in Valparaiso, and suddenly, all four hundred people in that theater are getting in their cars and driving somewhere else and spending the money, shopping in other communities, dining in other communities, buying flowers for performers in other communities. So I just want you to think about that part of it, instead of just the loss of the beautiful arts organization.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Chauvin, and I live at eleven-twenty-three Elliott Drive in Munster. I just want to reiterate the impact of economic development with something that's called cultural economics, and so there's a great benefit to the town in having the center there. The, I, there are also serious questions about the need, what's been reported, about the need for extended administrative space for the school of town, and whether or not we could preserve what's existing that is actually present at the art center. I am not, I am currently serving, and I have for several years, on the Board of Directors for the Toll Theater in Hammond. I'm not speaking for the Toll, I'm not representing the Toll Theater here. But I do want to use it as an example of how there can be an arts municipal partnership. It doesn't happen only at the school. In fact, in Fishers, Indiana, they have, they're constructing a whole new building to house the city offices as well as the night center, and it's something that needs to. But with the Toll Theater, we took a real hit during COVID, as did all theaters. We survived, we had to be very diligent. The building, I believe, is actually on the side of the city, and there are opportunities for the Toll to supply progress from the city, through the city of Hammond, and also through the human court authority. They do not hand over money, the Toll Board and the employees of the Toll have to improve their due diligence and budgeting. We are very risky, and we are very engaged in the community, and they continue to do wonderful shows. So there are partnerships out there where it is possible, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Starswitch. I was here about a month ago about traffic problems in my neighborhood, Azalea and Camilla Streets, where people think it's a personal height. I'd like to commend the town for starting work on Azalea, the plan on putting in speed bumps, please tell me, and that's what we need. We also need it on Camilla. I understand it might take, might take a long time before that happens. So I would like to address you guys and ask you guys to do something about Camilla. Safety should be your wonder, number one job for your citizens here, tax-paying citizens. And until they can do something with speed bumps, I suggested that they put stop signs up there, something that's better than nothing. Think you guys need to do that for the safety of your citizens. We're talking about little kids playing over there. The warm weather was here, kids are out running around, which is a great thing. You can't put off safety, I can tell you that right now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Maria Tiago, thirty-three, forty-nine, South Manager, Indiana. I'm the manager of trauma catering at the Center for Visual and Performing Arts, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our owner, Joseph Trauma, our chef, and our staff, and many who are in attendance here today. The last town council meeting, where many of us spoke at, I feel that we heard an outcry of support from many, many people from Munster and all around the Northwest Indiana region to keep the CBPA from closing. It's all over the newspapers, Facebook, social media. It's not just the people in this room here, tonight, that are a bad thing, it's the people all over the region and other states that express their concern. You've had, as you stated, a bunch of emails in the last few weeks about people asking you guys to step in and to help save the CBPA and its current tenants. There, we've seen support from the council members and newspapers and articles, interviews, you know, wanting to explore that, that purchase. So I think a lot of us have a question of, you know, how do we move forward? How does that happen? What are we doing now? We need your help. We need your help to start the process, to put the topic on the agenda, to explore the purchase of the CBPA and saving the future of the tenants, and staff and customers that walk through our doors every day, every week, every event. We had our popular Easter brunch yesterday, it had been sold out since the beginning of February, and, and we have our Mother's Day brunch coming out. That one's been sold out since the beginning of March, we're still two months away. We still have people calling every day, trying to get in, even though we're sold out, even just to get on our waitlist. We have our Father's Day brunch that is on track to be sold out soon. And if you can believe it, people are already asking about Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, November. You know, because they love our food, they love what we do there. People were asking over and over yesterday at our brunch, what's gonna happen if you guys aren't here? We don't want you guys to leave. All I can say is, we don't want to leave, right? And so, the CBPA, it's not an empty shell of the league, it's not, there's life in that building. Many of us who are there every day, we see it, it's not an empty shell, it never has been. Mr. Powers and the Community Foundation, they started something beautiful there, they saw something special there, they helped our company during tough times during COVID, and for whatever the reasons are, they can't move forward with us anymore. But the CBPA needs nurturing, and the town of Munster and Munster Park can help, can help do that, and help bring new life into it. There's so much potential for this place, and you all can help bring that potential to reality. Could you imagine the revenue that this town would be losing if we become offices or preschool? We heard a little bit the last meeting from people like Mr. Cook from St. John, who was here, you know, that went to the, to the South Shore Art, spent gas, right, went to Giovanni, spent two hundred dollars, and all the other people that came from the, the rest of the areas around to spend their money here, right, and because of the game. The New High Hotel that's about to open in Munster, one of our brides has people flying in from other states, from out of the country, and they're gonna stay there because of the wedding they're having in a couple of weeks at CBPA. Could you imagine the revenue potential if there were more events in our ballrooms, more shows or plays were brought back, more symphony concerts, more gallery openings? You know, and other seniors, we've heard from the seniors about not having a senior center. There's plenty of space, and there's plenty of opportunity for growth there that would benefit all the citizens of Munster, and it's been almost a month since the news broke about the sale, and our company, and as tenants there, we still, today, we don't have any answers because our staff needs to give our customers. Customers call and they email every day about the future of their events, and we still can't give any answers. We just have to be honest, and we say we don't know yet. We have new customers coming in all the time, people calling, they still want their events there, and we have to be honest, and we tell them what's going on, and they still want to book with us, even do that, you know, and that's because they believe in us and they believe in the future of the CBPA. And so, that place is a gem, and it's been a blessing for Munster, and it can't be lost. So we're here, as you can see, we're here and we're ready, and we're hopeful to work with you all to help save the CBPA. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brad Motahano of one-eight-zero-five-one, Chicago Avenue of Lansing, Illinois. My future apologies, I do have a tendency to stutter, people can carry with me. I would like to address a few thoughts and concerns I have about the purchasing of the Center for Visual Performing Arts. A couple of board meetings ago, my mother, Maria Tiago, my manager of trauma catering, and my father, head chef, Hugo Francisco, spoke on their concerns and thoughts about the center, or as I would like to call it, my second home. When I was twelve years old, I started how, I started to help out the chefs on my all-day day during middle school. I started out with putting bacon, bacon on pans and learning how to cut a watermelon at twelve years old. Parent ownership of Joseph Trauma even went as far as purchasing an extra small chef coat that made me almost an honorary little chef. And that's almost every kid's dream at that time, that's what I wanted to do, and that's where I wanted to be, it was my home. This center was my first job until the age of eighteen, when I got into the fire service full-time. I currently here in my service at Estella Illinois, however, whenever Chef Joe or Chef Hugo needed my help, I, I didn't walk, I sprinted to their help because they had my back, they always have been. Chef Joe and Chef Hugo, they aren't just fathers, and they aren't just bosses to us, they're mentors, they're mentors, they're role models. And I'm not just speaking because Chef Hugo's my father. With the Munster School Board purchasing the center, the board has taken away that mentorship from other people like me, who have been there for years. It's where I learned respect and discipline and motivation to be a well-respected member in my fire service today and throughout my village. It's where I learned respect and discipline and motivation to be a well-respected member in my fire service today and throughout my village. But for the first time, when I learned to put bacon on those pans, I was being mentored the whole time and I didn't even know it. It's a place of hope and a place where people gain friends and it's a place of what some of us like to call a safe place to go. But this isn't about me and the staff now. It will affect the entire region and the village of Munster. Customers have been coming to the center for years and nothing but to make memories. I have met customers that have driven down south, from down south, just to begin their own experience at the center. The village of Munster will not just lose out financially, but they will lose out on our reputation, the center have given this time in the region. On that note, I would like to please ask with full confidence and consideration to not let Munster School Board take ownership of not just my second home, but the region's second home. Thank you.
Um, my name is Tracy Martin. Um, I live at nine three five River Drive. Um, I'm currently, uh, just for everybody who knows, my house overlooks the river. I'm looking. It hasn't breached. We're good. So I am also here to talk about the CBPA. Um, I I don't know where to start. Um, I've been going, I sing a mail till one. I just sang Carmen Carmine. Is anybody with that? Um, I was great. And as I left Carmen Carmine, I could not get to my car because um every five feet, somebody would reach out to, because we are very distinctive. We all have these long black dresses on. Um, somebody would come up to me um and stop me with tears in their eyes and say it was the most beautiful thing that they'd ever heard. Now, I volunteer that time and I volunteered that time because it's precious. Um, and I rehearse once a week at that building. Now, um, I have, we, all of us, of course, are very concerned that we're gonna lose that space. And when I reached out to the symphony to find out where we've been rehearsing, people, no. Um, we have no idea what might happen to that beautiful community organization of people who've been there, who've been singing there. I have kept that that particular cultural arts alive in this region for uh since nineteen seventy-five. Um, sorry, my daughter. Um, so there's also the other symphony, the other community organizations that meet there that are part of the symphony, such as Youth Orchestra. I mean, I bet you some of you have had, you've seen performances. Um, your children may have participated in here. Um, these are vital resources that won't be available or that are ritually available. Uh, because if anybody, if anybody here remembers maybe ten years ago, um, right over on Manor Drive, I used to live on that, yeah. We were just about to move and just as we were about to move, there's this whole little block of areas of houses that were duplexes um that were seized by eminent domain and bought by the town. Um, and we were like, what's going on with that? And it would, we were told, now we signed one off that said, oh, this is gonna be a to, like a toddler park um for this big, this big huge pile of blocks that only happened to just, you know, conveniently right by the train station. Um, so we're like, okay, that's kind of weird. There's a park down the street that's barely seldom used, but okay. Um, but then, you know, lo and behold, years go by, no top park goes up there and instead, now what is it? It's gonna be a parking lot for the train. Now, hey, I'm excited about the train. But I don't like being lied to. And I have to say that I, any assurances that we get from the school town of Munster that say, oh, we're going to continue to work with these organizations that are gonna be tenants here, we're not gonna get rid of the CBPA, we're not gonna reappropriate their land and use it for other things. Based on my experiences with that top park and other municipal projects that have happened here in Munster, uh, my confidence that the, that the school town is gonna keep to part of their margin um are very low. Once that sale happens, whether they say they're gonna continue to host um NISO and the South Shore Arts, um, we can't bang on it. We know that that's not necessarily gonna be true because they'll own it and they can do what they want. So my question to you is, how are you going to stop this? What are you going to do to preserve that as a community resource? The school town of Munster does not need that facility. And anybody who believes that they're gonna do with it what they say they are, are being naive. Now, I'm also kind of concerned that this is all moot because we've also got statements, right? I mean, I went on today, I discovered that on the, let me make sure I'm getting this right. The Munster Republican Central Committee page, um, which I believe you councilman Peterson are are a significant writer, contributor to this page. Um, we've got a statement there that says that we
Miss, Miss, I'm gonna ask that, one, you've kind of toned it down, you're getting right on the, the edge of of not being as professional.
I've been perfectly professional. I'm just saying that I, there are comments here from, I believe, made by people sitting right here.
Ms. Martin, I can assure you, I have nothing to do with that poster.
It says here, in the words of the great Dr. Zeus, and this is in regards to the CBPA, don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened. So I don't think anybody here is gonna be confused about the persuasion politically of the people that are sitting up. So I, while you guys are saying that you're reviewing all these emails and taking these all into consideration, um, it's kind of difficult when we're seeing this sort of thing going around because I know that most of you are actively associated with the Munster Republican Central Committee. So how are we supposed to have any confidence that you are really taking these concerns of these citizens into consideration and that this is not just lip service? So that we'll, I'll go away and then we'll go to the national council meeting.
Again, I I thank you very much and I'm gonna have to cut it off. Thank you.
My name is Mike Buchanan. I live in Brooklyn, Brooklyn, for L in Munster. I understand that a number of people have um stood up here and talked about the elderly people that they really enjoy going to um performing arts. For a lot of us, it's the only place we can go to. I don't go to Chicago anymore. I can't get around Chicago. I don't um have the money to spend in Chicago, basically, you know, but I do have enough money that I can go perform the art. We've enjoyed a lot of good shows, uh performances by different people over the years. I sit in the disabled part uh seating at the performing arts and gotten to know a lot of people who really um enjoy it. Because, you know, they have the lovely part of it is, is that it's only place the band go and they, and they do good. If you don't, don't close it down, it's, it provides a lot. You've got the restaurant, you've got rentals, you've got all kinds of things that all of your I know COVID was a bad time. You're just gonna have to live with it, so. Thank you.
Well, how do we see that it's a business of purpose? I've been a banquet server at CBPA for thirteen years. I've worked hard in the industry for forty-five years. Since having a career at the center, I've never observed a more attentive, caring company that takes so much pride in taste, presentation and service. Even during COVID, trauma catering took care of holidays and Sundays by having a driver for table food ready to serve for new guests and for old customers. They were so grateful and totally satisfied. I still get asked, you have that driver? They were, uh, listening. Trauma catering belongs to CBPA not just because the jobs are at stake, because it's been there since the building opened. To watch the children grow up, weddings turn into anniversaries, baby showers turn into graduations, we interact with the guests. To watch your favorite room transform into our guest's magical moment is all the words sacred. Not to mention the countless use of the art gallery for cocktails, marriage, even our city chambers for breakfast. Other chambers from other cities also come. Unions, celebrities, uh, mayors, governors, I have pictures. They all enjoy trauma catering and return year after year. So we must be doing something right. Uh, so please don't make something that has been so right for CBPA go wrong. If the school administration had no problem putting children in a trailer to learn while they repair or upgraded their school, they should have no problem getting a trailer for themselves. Jack the pipe and make a new building on their spot and still have more woods for space for the parking lot. Create your own dream building to last and leave our CBPA alone because we give them people their dreams to become realities. Thank you.
And the third point, I'm going to stop the end of the public comment with the last lady that's waiting here.
Hi, Ryan.
Hi, Ryan.
Hi, Ryan Dean, eight two twenty-two White Oak Avenue. Uh, I'm just going to relate to uh the post that was just recently discussed uh by another person here tonight uh that was on the Munster Republican Party Facebook page and considering that they, the entire council is all Republican, it does actually have merit to the public policy at hand. In short, it says that the town will not be involved in the purchase of CBPA and states they thank community for providing the art building for all these years when it's time to move on. Despite the pleas you've heard tonight, it seems that the council has already made up their mind. Uh, these are all rhetorical, but has any discussion been had with the Community Foundation, the school town of Munster? Any discussion with North Township, the RDA, or any other region entity that would be interested in working with the town to keep this building? Uh, everyone has come to love. Has any discussion regarding a return on investment that may be worth purchasing? The post states it's not their area of concern to purchase private property, but the town in fact had purchased private property, as was mentioned earlier, uh, not very long ago, purchasing homes on Manor Avenue, which is now had become a parking lot for the train station. I asked the council today to review the potential purchase of the CBPA. The town will stand to have twenty-eight million dollars in TIP funds in which the CBPA lies in a TIP district and can be used to purchase this building. In the end, the conclusion may not be it's not feasible. However, the council owes it to the residents who enjoy the theater, employees who may lose their jobs and the region who spend their hard-earned dollars right here in Munster to have at the very least a work study to review the potential purchase of this town that's right here in Munster. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
My, my name is Anne Davis. I live at three twenty-two Trima in Michigan City, Indiana. Uh, I spoke through last time and I didn't want to take a different tack this time because I know many of these folks in this room have good intentions and since I'm up the center, uh, I've been really fortunate for the types of work that I've been able to do. I've worked in entertainment. I've worked in the museum industry. Um, I've seen a lot of cool stuff in a lot of Republican states. Um, I've worked with a lot of different people that all have something to teach you, you know? Um, I've worked with men who won't talk to you until day three when they ask you to tighten up their arms for them. So if it were possible to not see this as a political issue, but as something that could be used to generate, um, you know, there's, I don't have a partnership available. I don't want to come at this from the same viewpoint because I know I sat at my desk many times at the end of the center's tenure and, you know, I moved on. I'm not looking to go back. But what I know about the kids that walk through that door, the kids that work for me, um, I really want to know. Because they were going into the cold areas because many of them, you know, were actually privileged kids that knew how to speak, knew how to handle money. All of, you've got, what happens is you get all these people in the same place. And all I would like to bring to point today is that I think there's probably a way of preserving that place, getting the funds to do it. You can, as I've worked in the museum industry, you're talking from the ground up, um, I spent about a year in my network to work working on a massive museum that, you know, North Dakota's Republican state. But what I found out is everybody's got an MO. Okay, so everybody get that stuff in, stuff happens, there's arguments over money, you name that. Uh, in the end, that was funded by the government, basically for the, the air force or all the military there. It's a big three type of place. It's great people, contractors who, they're marvelous, you know? And museums, there's people that can actually bring in money for a place like that. You have a lot of unused space in that building. The shop downstairs could be a tiny museum. All you need to do is focus on, you know, science, technology, math, that kind of thing. The thing about museums is that it is all, all of that education is done through design, through art. That person knows CAD, they know math, they know budgeting, they know art. These are some weird people and they weren't weird people. The second point I'd like to make is that my dad was a plaster who went to Vietnam and came back. Went to school, never said a word about what he saw. He was a medic and um he has education everywhere in hospitals. So I know what's at stake here. I grew up hearing, I know about the deals that happen in back rooms. I know the deal and I know these things have to happen to keep a town running. I respect that. But in no way, shape or form, this was never a public issue. This is not how real estate is handled. I don't believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the school district of Munster, people in the real estate business, I'm not mistaken.
Excuse me, they're not unquestioned. I'm sorry, please.
No, I understand.
They will are constructive.
You better believe it. If this is something that is gonna happen, there are so many people in this room who contribute to it who really know how things are going. I have no problem even with how it's done because I know that's how business works. One thing I want to say about all of it is that that place, particularly the theater, it ran, there were times that it really did run in the red and there are many reasons for that. You need fundraising, you need people to do the job of that, you need somebody to keep that budget in long. Toward the end of my tenure there, I put in lighting, sound, wifi, I brought in corporate renters. You know, these people are willing to come in and donate, they're willing to rent the space. That space is ready to go and currently a couple hundred thousand dollars of lighting and sound is not working because folks don't know how to work, you know, they don't how, don't know how to make it work. So you're talking about a whole bunch of assets just hanging in the air. Don't know how to use genie, don't know how to get up and change a lamp. You've got some issues happening here.
Miss, I'm gonna have to ask, we've been getting off, I mean, we're getting off the subject here. We really want to be courteous to the folks that are here and give them an opportunity. So I'm gonna do the finish up.
You better believe this. You've got assets there. We've always, I appreciated everything that the hospital did for us. They have to be moved properly. There's a way to make that place work. There's a way to use those assets. And I'm also sorry about tracking the plan to speak tonight, but I wanted to, to avoid some important and Greg, for one, thank you for everything you've done for us over the years.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and talk to the other public sessions, sure.
Miss, I know you, you said that, but um I'm not speaking on the CBPA. I'm speaking on something that's actually on the agenda, but I I wanted to be nice to all the people that came up for the CBPA, can't please speak. Uh, I mean, I'm not speaking about that, but, you know, you know, they're all here for that. I'm actually talking about something that's actually on the agenda for tonight. I'm just waiting to let them get it differently off and off of that.
All right, I'll let you do that, but I'm
Thank you. Appreciate it. This is actually on the agenda, so it's not like I can come back next time and talk about her. Um, so uh, I actually want to talk about resolution numbers.
Name and address, please.
You want it on here too? Anybody sign it on here too?
No.
No? I'm horrible.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Michael Getford, one zero three eight zero Oxford Place.
Thank you.
I've been at a lot of the meetings, uh, seeing many of you. I know you're a council. I don't count me as much anymore. Uh, I do watch it all online, so. Uh, anyway, I've seen the resolution zero five nine making its way through all the commissions, uh, all the, the boards. Um, and uh, And now I think coming to you guys tonight, uh, next meeting, I, I wanted to ask you to reconsider taking money away from town development used for the purchase of vehicles. Understand that the law allows it, but just because you can do it doesn't mean you should do it. Vehicles, maintenance, replacement costs. Are these cars driven home? Regardless, there's added fuel costs. Seems it's far more than just initial purchase price. It's not about a one-time diversion of funds away from the development. Lot, lot, lot. Just ask to reconsider that.
All right, thank you. And with that, I do have to close it, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Just make one small comment. Please, I'll make it short this week. I'm Corinne Hellover. Twenty-eight thirty-six one hundred and ninety-seven Street, Langton Millie Wood. I hadn't planned on coming here and saying anything, but we have a jewel in our Artistic Cultural Center. And we wouldn't have it to be having this discussion today if it weren't for Joe Trauma and Pocatampa that kept it going because of COVID with their programs and their meals. I'm active, I'm on the Wannas Board. I spend more time in Munster than I do in my home in Lansing. I work for all of you because I love what the center and the theater does. All of you. All of you, the cultural center, the center of our lives, for our family, for single adults, for children, for seniors. And I committed you for it. And I'm willing to work hard to maintain and continue our center and our trauma catering. They went the extra mile for us. We're asking, I'm asking you to go the extra mile and save our center and theater. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to go into the consent agenda. Sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Miss, you have some reporting to do on the open to the public.
I do. As part of public comment, we have, I do have to report that we received eighty-six electronic public comments. Actually, we received eighty-seven. Of the eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-six of them supported very similar comments to what we heard here tonight. I was going to read them, but they were very, very similar. There is one that is, made me smile, so I'm going to read it. It's very short. It said, "I'd like to voice my opinion to retain the C D P A. We have no other art or culture venue in this town. Taking away the only spot for art, music, theater, et cetera, would be quite sad for a town that really doesn't have much else to offer." And I have to say, electronic comment number eighty-six, you made me smile. So we do have more than the C D P A in town, but it is really an important piece of our town in Munster. And comment number eighty-seven was against the town getting involved with the purchase. So the one other one that I wanted to bring up did talk about perhaps the possibility of a private-public partnership. And it was from the head of the South Shore Arts and she is very active in the town, not only as a prior employee, she's, her son is a performer there and she had a lot of really great ideas. But so many people had really good things to say about the center and many things that it offered. So I don't want to take too much more time because there were some, there were some duplicates and then some of the two hundred and nine that we received last time also came again. So, so yes, I, I just printed that out and put them in groups of ten and, yeah, they got counted. If you sent it to me, I counted it, so. Thank you all for your input. Yes, so that's, that's the electronic portion.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. With that, I'd like to close the open of the public session and we have a comment that would be made by Mr. John Castro.
Good evening. My name is John Castro. I am a member of the School Town of Munster Board of School Trustees. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the School Town of Munster Board of School Trustees, in accordance with Indiana Code, voted in favor of Resolution eight six eight, which indicated that the school town is interested in purchasing the property at ten forty Ridge Road, which includes the center for visual and performing arts. That is all the board did. No decision to purchase was made at that time. I want to reiterate and make sure everybody understands that. It was an opportunity. We expressed interest. Nothing further. All the rest that you've heard, that you've read, unless it's coming from a school town, has been conjecture, has been self-leading commentary, has been stuff that people see in the newspaper. I live in this town. My fellow board members live in this town. We understand the passion that people have for the arts. We understand the, the passion that people have for town catering. We respect the family. We respect the hard work, the love that everybody in this town and everybody in this room has expressed, that Mrs. Darkey, her husband has expressed to us. We understand that. We appreciate all those things. But again, no decision to purchase, make any purchases were made. In the coming weeks, the school town will be doing its due diligence to determine if the property is worthy of purchase and if such a purchase is in the best interest of the district and its students now and into the future. Given that the Community Foundation of Northwest Indiana has offered this property immediately adjacent to our secondary school's campus, to the school town, to the school town at a price below its market value, the school town would be foolish not to consider buying. Any such purchase, if it were made, would be a small part of a district-wide facility improvement project that is to be financed by a sixty-two million dollar mortgage bond. The board voted in favor of this project and the bonds preliminarily in December and finally via Resolution eight six seven on February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Consequently, no part of this district-wide facility improvement project will be paid for with the funds raised from the referendum, which was approved by town voters during the election itself in April of last year. Nor, by the way, is any of this funding available to use for salaries. State code simply provides. As part of the due diligence process, rest assured that the school town will be having extensive discussions in the coming weeks with the Community Foundation, the C D P A's current tenants, and elected administrative officials from the Town of Munster about how best to proceed or whether to proceed at all. Allow me next to correct some misinformation that has arisen in the wake of this expression of interest. First, the School Town of Munster's enrollment is stable and not projected to go down or up significantly in the coming years. If the school were to go through with the purchase, only a small portion of that building would be converted for administrative space. At the very least, the school town would intend to keep South Shore Arts and the Northwest Indiana Symphony as tents. Public school districts may not yet be mandated by state to offer preschool, but Munster parents keep asking the town to provide such a program and many of our peer districts and the state already do. That said, I know there was some thought that that building may be used as a preschool facility. At our last meeting, we voted to initiate a pilot program for preschool that would be housed in one of the elementary buildings. So that is public record. All the things I'm recording here are public record. They've been, you can go online and watch their records on the School Town of Munster website. And I believe those are posted on YouTube, but through the website you can see publicly, this is what we have announced. If the school town does not pursue a district-wide facility improvement plan, which may include, may include purchase of the C D P A and starting a preschool program. I would leave that, that part of that because as I mentioned, the preschool program isn't, isn't a pilot, the potential pilot phase that would be housed in another elementary building. Munster, if, but if we, if we do not consider this, Munster risks no longer being a primary destination for prospective home buyers that would adversely affect home values in our town, something none of us desire. So again, this is something back. For your time, again, so all public record. This has been discussed at our meeting. So I invite you to go back and look and check and see if you so desire it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number two.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I'd like to go into the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Any items? Mrs. Miss, would you call the vote?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. All right, that takes us to, I differ here. Our old business. We have no old business at this point. And that takes us to new business, Resolution twenty-one twenty-eight, self-purchase for the twenty twenty-four twenty-five snow season.
So each year the town participates in the state of Indiana's joint purchasing of road salt. But the town has to commit to a certain minimum tons of salt that they will purchase that happen earlier in March. And out of the reservation that council has asked for the dots to confirm that purchase.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one twenty-eight as presented, authorizing the council president and interim director of public works to purchase twenty-five hundred, or twenty-five hundred tons of treated salt from the awarded state contractor through the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five state joint purchasing program bid on road salt for Indot Report District number four.
I second the motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Other than we need to pre-plan, if we have winter, we have snow and ice, we need to have salt. So with that, Mrs. Miss, would you call it all?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Next item is ordinance nineteen thirty-six, water bond ordinance.
So the council adopted a water increase about two years ago. And when that rate was adopted, it included the ability to issue a bond to do some major infrastructure programs. We're now ready to go for that bond in order to fund some of these projects. The things that are coming up are a major water main, replacement project. That bid opening will be coming. Then there's some other projects as well. This is the first step to issue that bond. We are also, and part of this will be given the authority to issue a bond anticipation note, which is more of a short-term borrowing that we can do in anticipation of the bonds that would be issued. Probably next year, we would be going to the state's, the state revolving fund that would allow us to get better rates. This is, again, this is the first step in order to get the bonds in the way.
We have a motion on this?
President, I'll make a motion to hear ordinance nineteen thirty-six on first reading, set second reading and adoption for our next town council meeting, ready scheduled for April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
Question I have is, when was the last time that the town did a project of this sort, that, you know, these revenue?
Water revenue bond?
Yeah.
It's been thirty years.
Okay, okay.
Since the last time we had one.
And, and is this really the, the way you do make, you know, I see eight million dollars of potentials. Is that what the project cost is going to be or is that kind of been preliminary in here for this point?
So right now, yes, the project, the main water main project that we're talking about has been engineered. The bid opening is supposed to happen next week, I believe it is.
Okay.
We are expecting that to be a multi-million dollar project. We are working with our financial advisor. We're looking for authority to do a bond to that eight point two five million dollars. But we anticipate issuing a ban based on what does that bid actually come in at? So it would probably be less than what the bond ultimately would be.
And when you said ban, that's the bond anticipation? No.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this a single project or is this a number of projects in town?
When I talk about the water main, it is one big project that we anticipate having to be bid out, like I said, a week or so. The project will actually start this year, finish next construction.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Comments? Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen thirty-seven, which is a sewer bond.
So pretty much everything I said about the water, if we're doing the same thing with the sewer, there would be rate increase. We contemplated doing a bond. We have some sewer projects that we want to do as well.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to hear ordinance nineteen thirty-seven on first reading and set the second reading and adoption for our next town council meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? All right, Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to letter engagement with Baker Tilly on water revenue bonds.
So this item and the next one are directly related to the two ordinance that you've just heard. It's for them to do the financial analysis that we need to do, be sure that they're sizing bonds correctly, be sure that the rates can support it.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to approve the letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for the waterworks bond anticipation notes.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. All right, that takes us up to item F, Greenwood and Thirty-Fifth Resident Liability.
Excuse me, we need a separate.
Baker Tilly sewer.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, very sorry about that. We have another Baker Tilly study.
Right, same idea, but for the sewer.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to approve the letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for the sewer bond anticipation notes.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing on Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. So that takes us up to item F now. Greenwood and Thirty-Fifth Resident Liability Release for the replacement of an existing fence at the same location on the Town of Munster easement.
That pretty much explains that, you know, the, the fence had been existing in the easement. The homeowner wanted to replace the fence in his previous location. This will allow that to happen and it's a separate license agreement that was updated based on comments made in the general review.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the provocable license agreement as presented. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing on Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yep.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item G, which is the change order number two.
This is for the C C M G twenty-three three one project. As earlier leading, council approved engineering to extend part of the bike path. This is to do the actual construction of the bike path.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order for Milestone Contractors North, Inc. For an increase in costs of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the total contract price with change orders to three million thirty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing on Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yep.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Yellens.
Yes, yes. All right, that takes us up to item H, Public. All right, that takes us up to item H, Public Works, unit number three fourteen. We have a price change for a trade-in on the truck which was priced out, or the, uh, trade-in value was priced out a year ago.
The the authority to purchase the vehicle was in twenty-twenty-two. Vehicles now come in, um, and they reduce the trade-in value because it's been a year since it was originally granted.
And we've been using the truck.
We've been using the truck for that.
Big motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three Ford truck F three fifty with a state fed purchase for a price of eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three minus the trade-in value of fourteen thousand for a total price of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars from Paul Herring Ford to replace unit three-one four, a trade-in.
All right.
Mr. President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing on Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Item number I is Annual Redevelopment Commission Reports.
Every year, there's a redevelopment commission report that has to be submitted on Gateway. I mean, we've been doing that each year. This year, there's a new requirement that 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 report be presented to the governing body, which would be the town council. So there's no action needed other than the president to accept it and place it on file.
Then I'll go ahead and accept that report. That takes us up to reports, any other reports to present? Any portfolio reports? Treasure Miss, our treasure.
I always like to, uh, I had a nursery meeting and I had fun and exciting things to share from my nursery meeting, but it was in the newspaper. So now it's not nearly as fun as exciting as I thought it was going to be. Um, they were talking about the road and future road improvements on the Borman um, and this new flex road, which is several years down the road, but we will see some construction works where they're putting the fiber optics on. But it's kind of nerdily exciting in that they're going to have uh, certain lanes are going to have variable speeds in them, you know, so you'll have big signs up here like this lane might be fifty-five, this one might be sixty-five, just based on, um, different things, different traffic conditions. Um, they're going to try in that outside lane, sometimes it's going to be open and sometimes it's not, just based on different traffic patterns. It's all very, uh, engineering and kind of exciting, they're going to meter entrance ramps. It's kind of just interesting and exciting what they can do, these traffic people to make things move better, and that'll be on ninety-four and sixty-five. And as the construction season goes, um, we're going to start seeing them build toward these things, big signs. Yeah, I mean, they won't be in effect till twenty-six, but they're starting to prepare for these things. And then I sit on the person, I'm the head of the Personnel and Finance Committee, and again, this is nerdily exciting for me, um, but we are going to, um, go to have a resolution to go to the General Assembly, um, to challenge them as far as the audit charges are. Um, we don't get detailed invoices and I don't see. We, uh, don't get a detailed invoice, and if we were, the state board of accounts doesn't give us a detailed audit, a detailed invoice, which if we were audited and they didn't get a, they didn't see a detail, we would get written up for that, and they're asked, they don't give us a detailed audit. So we're going to, you know, throw a back at them and say, you don't give us a detailed invoice, so we're going to challenge them on that and, uh, see if we can get some of these audit costs reduced. So I just am happy to report that we're taking some action, so. You're fun at nursing, so that's why I had to report it from my activities there.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Miss. Announcements, all town council meetings begin at seven P M, unless otherwise noted. April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four will be the regular town council meeting and the regular redevelopment commission meeting. With that, motion for adjournment?
I'd like to make that a motion.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded that?
Sure.
With that, we'll go into our redevelopment commission meeting. Jane, and Mrs., uh, we can take the rolling.
Sure thing, um, Commissioner Shinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes.
And our liaison to the school board, John Kansgrove.
Right.
Nice to see you.
See you.
And it's eight fifteen.
All right, uh, with that, we have a, uh, public hearing, which is resolved, which is, um, it's resolution zero five nine. This is the open to the public session on this resolution only.
Correct, it's the public hearing that's required to have.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on resolution zero five nine?
I already did, but do you want on the record for this meeting?
Yes.
Does that have the interesting look on your face, Ms. Nellens, when I was speaking before?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Sorry. So, uh, to reiterate, uh, yeah, uh, it is on public record, my name is Michael Godfrey, one and zero eight zero Oxford Place, uh, yeah, so I've seen it come through, and what's before you tonight, I urge you to reconsider, uh, there's as I mentioned, uh, that's a lot of money that we're steering away from development in town. Uh, I understand, you know, vehicles are nice, but they have maintenance, they have fuel costs, uh, they have replacement costs, uh, are we just going to keep rating the, you know, bond, the development funds over and over to do all that? Uh, that doesn't seem like a very prudent thing to do, uh, this town needs the development dollars, and, uh, I I I urge you to reconsider steering that money away from where it was initially intended. Again, just because we can do something does not mean it's the right thing to do, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on resolution zero five nine? Seeing no one, I will close the open to the public hearing. Now we have an open to the public comment, which has the same rules as our previous meeting, if anyone would like to come forward and address the redevelopment commission at this time. Is there anyone like to come forward and address the redevelopment commission? Seeing number one, we'll close the open to the public, that takes us to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any questions or comments on the agenda items? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss?
Commissioner Shinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. There is no old business under new business, we have resolution number zero five nine.
It's the final step in the amendment plan for a lot of TIPS to the public stage.
And this is something that's recently been approved by the state of Indiana for the use of TIPS dollars.
Yes, there was a change at the General Assembly to permit this.
Right.
Mr. Nellens?
Motion, yes? Sure. Michael.
So as as your memo indicates, the the law changed in twenty twenty-three. Your redevelopment plan, which this resolution meant was adopted prior to that change in the law, and when you, when the town adopted the redevelopment plan initially, it provided that the potential uses for TIPS revenue and redevelopment dollars uh, could be used for the maximum amount for the allowable uses under the law. Okay, so when it was adopted years ago, we matched state law with with the potential for use of the of the maximum allowable uses. Last year that law changed, the state law changed, it said there are these additional uses that are now allowed. What your confirmatory resolution does is it matches state law, again, puts it back consistently with state law to give you the opportunity this resolution to not make a decision in and of itself, but what the resolution does is it gives you the opportunity to use those funds for the maximum potential uses allowed under state law.
All right, thank you, we have a.
Yeah, there's a motion. Okay, there is a motion in the secondary. No, okay, I'm sorry, but. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution oh five nine as presented. I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I I guess my question is, have we put together what our spending plan is or any decisions about how the plan is going to be altered, or what the funds, any kind of discussion about using the different funds?
This is just the authority.
Right, so so right, so right now.
It's just the authority.
Okay, so we, so up to this point, we haven't any discussion about what type of?
No.
No.
Okay.
And our intent is to uh, contract with Baker Tilly to do a study of our TIPS cash flow and to know where we are.
Baker Tilly is currently doing, uh, an annual report that they've done for us in the past, and I did ask them to look at potential future TIPS revenues, what does it look like moving forward? Um, and that this is that it this has been, the redevelopment commission council has been in the process of making it available for public safety, and what would that look like with the TIPS revenues? That report is expected sometime later this month.
Okay, that's.
And this just puts us more aligned with the state.
Yeah. Oh, I, I find, I just wondered how much of the plan is been put together, or if we're still waiting for, you know, forecasting and things like that, so that, I appreciate that now.
Any further questions, discussions? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss?
Commissioner Shinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. With that, we have, uh, any reports? Tonight, no? Any announcements? No announcements, looking for adjournments?
I'll make that motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That included their meetings tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors down to.
Thank you.
If there are any persons in the room that need their father.
Anything about the. Oh, thanks.
I feel.
Yeah.
My God, I miss me you too. I was down by can. Thank you.